Hey, evening, all. Mary, thanks for your help getting me set up here last minute.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to this special meeting of the Planning Commission and Sustainability and Infrastructure Committee this Tuesday evening, August 26th. Sorry about that. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can you please do the roll call, Mary?
Yes. Chair Ebner.
Present.
Vice Chair Patel.
Present.
Commissioner Nugent.
Present.
Commissioner William- Wiggins.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Committee Member Chair Ruinsky.
Present.
Vice Chair Narita.
Here.
Committee Member Michael.
Here.
Committee Member Riddlemeier.
Present.
Committee Member Robinson. Robbins. Cliff, you need to unmute yourself.
This is Colin Marcherana, Executive Manager of One Shoreline. I'm attending through Zoom and we're unable to hear anything through Zoom. I'm following along on YouTube as well.
Yeah, this is Cliff Robbins, SIC Commissioner. I am also, I hear Colin, but I'm not hearing anybody else.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I think we need to do the roll call again.
Mary, can you please do the roll call?
Chair Ebner.
Present.
Vice Chair Patel.
Present.
Commissioner Nugent.
Present.
Commissioner Wiggins.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Chair Winsky.
Present.
Vice Chair Narita.
Here.
Committee Member Michael.
We're all Commissioners.
Commissioner Michael.
Present.
Commissioner Riddlemeier.
Present.
Commissioner Robin- Robbins.
Here.
Thank you. It is noted that Cliff Robbins of the Sustainability and Infrastructure Committee is joining remotely from 12441B Northwoods, Truckee, California, 96161, where an agenda has been also posted. This is a special joint meeting. Our conference ID number is 878-8295-3671. That's 878-8295-3671. Passcode is 206715. Again, that passcode is 2066715. Good evening and welcome to all. We're excited to be here in person with options for virtual participation. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Mary, would you like to introduce the first item?
Yes, item one, One Shoreline Planning Policy Guidance Informational Workshop.
Thank you. We will start with a staff presentation followed by clarifying questions, public comments, and then commission questions and comments. This item is an informational study session. There will be no action taken. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Planning Commission and Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission members. My name is Manira Sandhir. I'm the Planning Manager with the Community Development Department. And to my right is Matt Fabry, who is the Deputy Director for the Public Works Department. And this is a second meeting in a row, so thank you, Matt, for joining us tonight. The focus of tonight's meeting is to receive an introduction to One Shoreline and the Planning Policy Guidance document that they released recently. This guidance provides a menu of tools that could be utilized to address climate change issues particularly as related to sea level rise, shallow groundwater rise, and flooding risks. The timing for tonight's workshop is intentional since the Planning Commission will be considering draft general plan policies over the coming weeks in the safety element, and this would provide the context for these discussions. I would like to note that since the item tonight is not the general plan, staff would appreciate if you could keep the comments and questions focused on One Shoreline and other city efforts. I promise that we plenty of opportunity to discuss the specific general plan policies in September. With that, to provide some background, I wanted to share first of all that the city of San Mateo has approximately four and a half miles of bay shoreline, out of which one and a half is on county land, and the rest of the three miles are protected through city levees. You probably already know why this is important. We are all aware of climate change being, leading to sea level rise, and this particular map on your screen shows one of the maps from our general plan that projects sea level rise to 2050, which is only 27 years from now, plus a 100-year storm event, and shows the kind of inundation risk that parts of the community could be at. With that in mind, the city and One Shoreline are engaged in several regional collaborative efforts to assess and evaluate the risk and also implement some risk averse measures. So with that background, I'm very excited to welcome and introduce Len Maderman and McKenna Wong to walk us through their presentation.
Okay. Can you hear me? Yeah. All right. Good evening, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to see you. And thank you for convening in this special session and inviting us to participate. And thanks to the city staff for organizing this. I'll start off by talking about One Shoreline in general and diving into our priorities, and then turn it over to McKenna Wong, a project manager with One Shoreline, to talk about the planning policy guidance in particular. And then, should I advance the slides? Is that, okay. Okay, got it. All right. So I'll start off with a little background on One Shoreline. One Shoreline is, the long name for One Shoreline, the official name, is San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District. We are not part of San Mateo County. We are an independent government agency, and I'll talk about that in a second. The origins of One Shoreline really started with several studies done by the county itself and by other entities. What you see here on the screen are studies by, or at least kind of screenshots of some of the key elements of studies from the county, from Caltrans, from Stanford University, the grand jury report in 2021, and then in August 2022, study by the Scripps Institution on our erosion issues on the Pacific coast side, and then most recently, a study just last month by MTC and BCDC. And all of those pointed to the, in some cases, unique vulnerability of San Mateo County to the water-related impacts of climate change. Show here a few pictures from recent events. The one in the left is San Bruno, as is the middle picture, and the one on the right is the Pacific coast side of San Mateo County. The one, the element that's most interesting in these pictures to me is the one in the middle, which takes place on a sunny day during a king tide about a mile upstream of San Francisco Bay. And so what this tells us is that the idea that water comes up from the ground during high tide events is not solely the concern of places like Miami that we hear about, but also in San Mateo County as well. The confluence of those events and rising seas with the atmospheric rivers that we've seen in recent years is our greatest concern. So there had been a flood control district longstanding since the 1960s in San Mateo County. It was called the San Mateo County Flood Control District, and it was administered by the county itself, but it only focused on about 10% of the county area and about 10% of the bay shoreline and none of the Pacific coast side. And so it was determined several years ago, it's hard to see that, but what it says is climate change is a transformative challenge that the county and the cities were not well positioned to address individually, and certainly this flood control district was not positioned to address the climate challenge for our county. And so in, oh, sorry, slow to go. So in 2019, there was state legislation to create One Shoreline as a special district effective January 1 of 2020, and again, we focus on the water-related impacts of climate change. That includes flooding, sea level rise, coastal erosion, and stormwater and water supply slash drought, and all of our activities support the environment and recreational opportunities. So our current priorities at One Shoreline, they're really divided, the way I think about it, is they're divided into four categories. Starts with planning, and so thank you for holding this discussion today, this joint meeting. The key questions that we at One Shoreline think about in terms of planning and that we encourage the cities to think about is what is being proposed today either by a private entity or a public entity? Is it going to function for its intended lifespan? And in other words, is it resilient to the future climate-driven conditions so we don't regret the decisions that we make today? That's the main question that we ask ourselves. So within planning, rubber meets the road in zoning, and we'll talk a little bit about a zoning ordinance that we wrote for the city of Burlingame that we're encouraging through this planning policy guidance that we'll talk about today, encouraging all cities to start adopting. Projects, multi-jurisdictional projects that are climate resilience, that are complemented by the future conditions, land use policies, and developments. So there are 12 cities of San Mateo County that are impacted by the bay, and they're all at different stages of planning, design, or construction in terms of their shoreline and resilience. So we at One Shoreline, you know, want to work closely with the city of San Mateo to include the city of San Mateo shoreline in that kind of aligned net of shoreline resilience. We know the key issues for San Mateo's shoreline. They include the connection to Burlingame and the North Shoreview area, which of course just underwent a project related to getting properties out of the FEMA flood zone, the Coyote Point of McMarina, which is a county asset, San Mateo Creek at the shoreline, the wastewater treatment plant and lagoon, and then finally Baywinds Park and the connection into the wall slash levee that Foster City is just about to complete construction on. Waiting for the slide to catch up. Okay, so the other area that we focus on are storms and reducing the impact of today's climate-driven atmospheric rivers. And integrating One Shoreline, so really what that comes down to is One Shoreline has an early warning system, that's countywide, and it alerts cities and individuals, in some cases directly, to impending flooding events based on the rainfall amounts, the geometry of the channels that are being asked to accommodate all that water, and other factors that play into whether water will overtop a creek system. So we have this early warning system, and we also are engaged right now in efforts to remove debris from creeks that flooded this past winter and also the winter of 2021, 22, because there were two atmospheric rivers, October and December 2021. They also caused flooding, maybe not in San Mateo, I'm not sure actually, but in other cities on the peninsula. So we look at those two, the past two winters of significant rain events, and are looking at where flooding occurred and what can be done in terms of debris removal in the creeks to reduce that flooding. So that gets to kind of how we can interact with the city of San Mateo on the storm issue, and both of those efforts really seem to intersect for us in Deansa Park, both the early warning system and the flood protection debris removal efforts. So that's something that we're talking with the city about as well as permitting agencies right now. And then the final priority is sustainability of this effort to develop an ongoing funding stream. The city of San Mateo joined all other cities in the county. There are 20 cities total in the county, and all 20 contributed to One Shoreline's first three years of operating funds, and that was matched by the county of San Mateo. Those first three years brought us through December of 2022 because we started in January of 2020, and One Shoreline has been able to extend that operational funding through various means for several more years, but we're looking for a long-term funding strategy, and we're exploring that right now. So that's one piece of sustainability of the effort. The other piece directly relates to planning, and that is how we have all sectors of society see climate resilience as their issue, and so it's not relegated to public works and planning or to One Shoreline, but folks that think about housing or utilities or transportation or all the sectors of society that people advocate on. We see climate as affecting all those sectors, and what we're trying to do at One Shoreline through working with agencies, nonprofits, and governmental, is to expand people's kind of viewpoint of how climate intersects with their interests. So my final slide, and then I'll turn it over to McKenna, relates to kind of the work that we're doing on the ground a bit. And first of all, long-term resilience, really two key ingredients, that we have local leaders such as yourselves and elected officials championing this cause of resilience and understanding that it's important that we plan for and build for future conditions, not just today's conditions. And then secondly, that we integrate land use with regional planning and project implementation. And when I say developments in the slide, I'm referring to both private and public, and in terms of public, it's built and natural infrastructure. So we have our first kind of major regional project that's run by One Shoreline, is in the shoreline of the cities of Millbrae and Burlingame, and it integrates zoning ordinance that I mentioned earlier for the city of Burlingame. So our project objective, and I show you this, I realize that you're not representatives of the city of Burlingame or the city of Millbrae, but I show you this to kind of understand what in our minds regional resilience projects look like. So for this project, it's about eight miles of shoreline, and it connects SFO to the city of San Mateo. The project objective is to keep the areas in yellow, and a previous slide presented by the city showed some of those same areas, they were in a different color, but essentially the overlay zone, if you will, of areas influenced by sea level rise. So it's to keep the areas shaded in yellow, protected from water that is overtopped by either the shoreline or the creeks, the many creeks that flow into the bay that are indicated as red lines. And we have a Bay Protection Standard that's part of the planning guidance policy, which McKenna will talk some more about, but essentially it takes the current 100-year tide elevation as defined by the federal government, FEMA in this case, and add six feet to that. And so it's tied closely to the Burlingame Zoning Ordinance, which was approved by the city council in December 2021, became effective in January 2022 as one of the first cities in the Bay Area to incorporate sea level rise into its zoning ordinance, and there are key development requirements associated with, or within the overlay zone, the yellow area, related to a buffer zone, the shoreline protection infrastructure, and the elevation, first floor elevation of buildings, stormwater capture and drainage requirements, and requirements related to groundwater. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to McKenna, and she'll talk in specific about our planning policy guidance, and then we'd both be happy to answer questions. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Len. Okay, so I will dive in a bit into the planning policy guidance itself, the document. So Len teed this up, speaking a bit about the Burlingame Zoning Ordinance. We took a lot of the lessons learned in template texts that we had worked with the city of Burlingame on for their zoning ordinance, looked to templatize it for other baside jurisdictions in San Mateo County, and that resulted in this planning policy guidance document that we just released in June 2023. The idea for this guidance document is that it's a standard evolving resource for jurisdictions, that means the 12 cities along the bay shoreline of San Mateo County and the county itself, to account for climate-driven future conditions, that's sea level rise, shallow groundwater rise, and creek flooding, in four key areas: general plans, specific plans, zoning ordinances, and then review of specific new private developments that are going before these jurisdictions for entitlement. Always find it helpful to outline what this document is and what it isn't, just for clarity. So first, this is voluntary guidance, not mandatory regulations. One Shoreline does not have land use authority in the county except for some really specific areas in our flood zones, but for the most part, this is a resource for jurisdictions to consider sea level rise and flooding in their land use decision-making as they implement their own authorities. It is designed to be an actionable template, not just a reference document that sits on a shelf and doesn't get looked at again. The paradigm shift to think about sea level rise and land use decision-making is a really difficult one, and we're trying to make that as implementable, pragmatic, and tangible as possible. So this document is really packed full of template language that's teed up for city staff to slot into their existing processes and draft planning documents as easily as possible. It is focused primarily on new substantial private development, not necessarily on existing development or public development. The line between private and public can be a little fuzzy throughout this document. I mean, there's general plan policies that would apply more broadly. As Len mentioned, there's stormwater drainage provisions in the zoning chapter that really could be applied to both private and public infrastructure, but for the most part, these provisions are really focused on new private development. There isn't guidance here on capital projects like wastewater treatment plants or roads. We're looking to develop a capital projects guidance to kind of be the sister document to this one by the end of 2024, and I can elaborate on that later, but right now, this document is primarily focused on new private development. And of course, it should go without saying, this is an evolving document. We're learning a lot already through comments and feedback that we've received from cities. We're looking to continue to iterate on this document, and especially too, as sea level rise progresses and we have updated science, this document will change. And that's the website. You can find it. It's publicly available. I'll walk us through the table of contents, just to orient you. So first, there's a preface section, some context setting for what this document entails, a little bit of like what I just said in that last slide, as well as an introduction of the Bay Protection Standard, like Len mentioned. This is a really key part of this document. I'll go into a little bit more detail in a later slide. Chapter one is focused on implementation. What is the recommended implementation process that One Shoreline has for jurisdictions as they read through, process this document, and look to implement it in their own planning processes, and how can One Shoreline support jurisdictions in that process? Chapter two, we start to get into the template language. So this is some high-level template language that is intended for general and specific plans, and it's divided by different types of elements in the general plan that you could slot in, what we deem as appropriate. And then chapter three is really like the meat of this document. It is template language for zoning ordinances. It's split into two overlay districts. One is the sea level rise overlay district applying to areas that we see as vulnerable to long-term sea level rise, and then the shallow groundwater rise overlay district that applies to the areas that we deem as vulnerable to shallow groundwater rise. There's a lot of different provisions here, some highlights, of course, applicability provisions of what we recommend, types of developments that should, where these provisions should apply. We do at this time have exemptions for low-density housing. That's something that we defer to cities on what they think is most appropriate, but we are not, a lot of the intent behind these provisions, a lot of them are quite substantial, are for large housing developments, commercial and industrial. We have creek and bay buffer zones that we recommend, 35 feet off of the creek bank, 100 100 feet off of the bay shoreline. A shoreline protection standard, like I mentioned, all new waterfront shoreline development should elevate their frontage on the bay to the One Shoreline Bay Protection Standard. Elevating the first four of all development, three feet above the FEMA base flood elevation, stormwater drainage provision, shallow groundwater rise, and of course, there's exceptions throughout that we weave in to allow for some flexibility for site-specific conditions. Chapters four and five take all of that, a lot of that zoning language in chapter three and turn it into checklist form. There's a project review checklist, as well as a standard list of conditions of approval. The intent here is to provide a resource for city staff as they review specific project developments and think about ways that they can weave in these recommendations today, so they don't have to wait for a zoning update to do that. The project review checklist is something One Shoreline actively uses to write its own comment letters on projects that cities refer to us to provide comment on that are along the shoreline. Okay, so what informed the planning policy guidance? We did a full nationwide look at where in the United States are there zoning ordinances that think about sea level rise and future climate-driven flooding. We started with the Georgetown Climate Center Adaptation Clearing House. This is a really helpful resource that has a lot of template language and sample documents throughout the country. From there, we found Boston has some really interesting zoning language, Broward County in Florida, Kauai, Norfolk, Virginia, New York City, and Rhode Island. We also partnered with Stanford, and they helped us conduct a literature review of additional resources. And then we also looked to California. California Ocean Protection Council has its sea level rise guidance that was issued in 2018. They're hopefully coming out with another update imminently. And California Coastal Commission has its own guidance focused on the Pacific coast, but there's a lot of themes that we carried over to our guidance. All of that informed the Burlingame zoning ordinance. We also worked with South San Francisco. They, in early and fall of 2022, passed their own sea level rise zoning overlay. And of course, we've worked with city staff on their general plan in San Mateo and in San Carlos. All of that informed the June 2023 draft. Okay, I'm going to walk us through five emerging areas that are likely will evolve in the planning guidance. We've received a lot of comments on these areas. A lot of new data will likely inform changes in these provisions. I'll walk through in a high level, yeah, these five different sections. So first is stormwater drainage. We did a lot of work looking at local studies conducted by CCAG of how climate change will impact rainfall in San Mateo County, and then as a result, how should we change the way that we size stormwater infrastructure and change our retention requirements for new private development? We did a lot of research on that. We also looked at the municipal regional permit and what they require. That's why that's shown there. There's still a lot of work to be done. The science is still evolving on how rainfall will be impacted specific to San Mateo County, and as a result, how we should change our standards. We're looking to really build out that city and partner with the Stormwater Committee, which is facilitated by CCAG, the county, and make those drainage requirements a bit more robust. And all of that will be done through our capital projects guidance that I mentioned earlier. The shallow groundwater rise overlay district was developed heavily based on an SFEI report that was released in 2022. For the most part, these provisions are high-level relative to the sea level rise overlay, given that they're just trying to trigger developers to think about how shallow groundwater rise will impact their design of foundations, of subsurface utilities, of road subgrades. It's just trying to trigger developers to think about that. For the most part, that language is quite high-level, and we don't have a lot of detail on what those actual strategies will look like. As this area evolves, I think those provisions should also be updated with more details. And One Shoreline's Bay Protection Standard. So I'll go into a little bit of detail on what the Bay Protection Standard is. This is One Shoreline's desired elevation at the top of any new shoreline infrastructure along the bay. As Len mentioned, it is defined as the FEMA base flood elevation. That's what FEMA defines as the 100-year water level of the bay during a 100-year storm plus six feet. So the FEMA base flood elevation plus six feet. So the way that this is woven into the planning guidance is there's a requirement for all new shoreline developments to either build to the Bay Protection Standard or grant the local jurisdiction land rights and space to build to the Bay Protection Standard later. We've gotten a lot of comments about allowing more flexibility with the Bay Protection Standard. And so we're looking at ways that we can not have it be necessarily an elevation-based standard, but maybe a standard that's based on a specific sea level rise scenario. There's also a lot of discussion about where does managed retreat fit into this. So the way that the planning guidance was developed was in response to what jurisdictions are currently approving along the bay shoreline. So as long as jurisdictions are continuing to review and approve new shoreline development, One Shoreline's focus is on how these new shoreline developments can be resilient to the conditions that they will face over the project life. As jurisdictions may be considering de-densifying their shorelines, or maybe adding more open space and considering managed retreat in some form, we are here to support that, but that's not fully developed in the current version of the planning guidance. And finally, I mentioned we have two zoning overlay districts in this current document. The sea level rise overlay district, there's a map on the right there. This is actually the map of future conditions. It's an interactive map that we released along with this planning document that illustrates the two overlay districts throughout the bay shoreline. The sea level rise overlay district is illustrated in yellow. The shallow groundwater rise overlay is in orange. We're also considering adding a third one. This would be a zoning overlay that's focused on the upper watershed areas for stormwater detention. The more water we can capture farther upstream, the less water we'll have to deal with farther downstream. And so this is another overlay we're considering in future iterations. Okay, in my last two slides, I'm going to pivot a bit to implementation, to tee up Manera, maybe to speak to some next steps. So what should implementation look like? First, we recommend that jurisdictions review the planning guidance in detail. It's a lot of detail in that document. We recommend you review it. Study the local extents of both overlay districts within your jurisdiction. Understand the context, what land use types will be impacted. All this should be done, of course, in parallel with community outreach. Integrating the draft policies in chapter two into general plans, we recommend integrating the recommendations in chapter three into zoning ordinances as a draft to be circulated to decision-making bodies, and after feedback is received, adopting those either through a standalone initiative or in concert with any planned general plan or zoning code updates. And how can One Shoreline support this process? We have provided technical assistance to many cities throughout the bay shoreline in many forms. We've presented to governing bodies and commissions. We've provided data related to sea level rise and flooding vulnerability, and provided maps that show those vulnerable areas. And we are always reviewing and providing comments on documents that cities request or input on. That could be draft general plan policies, zoning codes. We've also received proposals for specific shoreline projects in cities. As they're going through the entitlement process, we reviewed those documents and provided comment, and we're happy to do that in San Mateo as well. We've already done it on the general plan, but for projects as well. And as with all aspects of course of the planning guidance, including One Shoreline is voluntary. Considering future conditions and local decision-making is a huge shift, and it takes a lot of time and resources, and we're here to add value to that process and to boost cities' capacity where it doesn't currently exist. That's why One Shoreline was created. Okay, now I'll pass it back to you, Manera.
Thank you, McKenna. And Len, that was very informative. So to wrap it up, we did want to tie in some of the information that McKenna and Len presented into what the city is doing and the steps that we are currently taking. So as you're all aware, we are right in the middle of our general plan update. We released a draft recently. That's where some of our policy work is focused on from a planning perspective. We have policies in the safety element that focus on sustainability and environmental justice with respect to climate change and sea level rise. The Public Works team is taking the lead on several planning and infrastructure improvement projects, such as the landfill long-term flood protection plan, Community Flood and Stormwater Protection Initiative, and then the North Central Shoreview Levy Project that was recently completed, and some other improvements at pump stations and the wastewater treatment plant. In terms of next steps, our goal is to continue to collaborate with One Shoreline. As McKenna mentioned, we've had a lot of back and forth through the general plan update process, as well as the development of the planning policy guidance. And we hope to continue that and also explore opportunities for One Shoreline to review and provide comments on development projects along the waterfront. We will continue to identify funding opportunities and additional infrastructure improvements. I know there was a meeting last night to talk about stormwater protections, so that is already happening as well. And then finally, one of the big policy items that comes out of our general plan is to adopt and implement an adaptation plan for the city. So I do want to take a minute to go over what that would mean. So we do have some initial funding to start efforts on a 2024 adaptation plan that will assess further the sea level rise impacts to the city. The map that I showed and some of the work that One Shoreline has done has not always calculated the protections that the levies are already providing, so we will try to fold those in, as well as look at some of the regional context and the regional efforts by further evaluating vulnerability, exposure, and risk. We are looking to develop adaptation strategies and create some monitoring recommendations, as well as develop funding for the projects that may come out of the adaptation planning So with that information, staff concludes this presentation, and of course, we have several folks from One Shoreline and also Public Works and CDD staff present to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, both or all three of you for the presentation. It was very informative, and the presentation was clear. At this point, I would like to ask any commissioners what clarifying questions they may have for either city staff or Len or McKenna at this time?
Through the chair. I had a couple of clarifying questions, if I might. On, and thank you for being here, and thank you for all the hard work. We're really appreciative to have the opportunity to discuss it with you. The base standard of base flood elevation plus six, there's mention in your policy document about when FEMA, I guess, is looking for insurance or looking at insurance zones, they also want two feet of freeboard. And I was just curious if we, if we're doing base flood elevation plus six, is that sort of like, in FEMA's eyes, when it comes to flood insurance, is that really BFE plus four plus two feet of freeboard? Or is it like six feet, and then they would expect at some point two more feet on top of that?
Can you hear me? Yeah, that's the correct interpretation. So that six feet serves as a buffer that can also partially be used for FEMA freeboard in order to obtain accreditation. It also, that additional four feet would accommodate sea level rise, and so that we're designing infrastructure that when the next FEMA maps are updated, doesn't immediately go back, those communities don't immediately go back into the FEMA floodplain. We want some additional buffer.
All right. Thank you.
So there are really two ways to think about how high to build a levy. One is, as you brought up, the issue is we want to get properties so that they are outside of the FEMA floodplain, both in terms of risk, but also in terms of the requirement if they have a federally backed mortgage that they have to pay, they have to buy insurance. The other way to think about it, aside from FEMA and insurance, is just protection. And most people don't know what the FEMA base flood elevation is, and what, how to define it, let alone what the number looks like in terms of where the water is, oh yeah, that equals base flood elevation. That doesn't happen. But people are familiar with the high tide. And so in terms of actually thinking about not insurance questions, but just what's the bay water level and what's it going to take to overtop a levy, the equivalent of the FEMA base flood elevation plus six is approximately equal to 10 feet above today's daily high tide.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I did have a couple more for whoever wants to take. This one is kind of just naive, so sorry for asking a basic question you can help me with. This document provides guidance for general plan language, specific plan language zoning, and all the way through to permits. And it seems like it's creating a pathway for individual private developments to install, call it resilience, improvements. And I'm wondering if we just designed something for the entire county waterfront, all 12 jurisdictions, and then just said, follow that plan? Why are we doing it this way? And that's my naive question, because I know I'm missing 19 things when I look at it that way, so.
No, that's not a naive question at all. It's a, it really gets to the heart of how do you build a resilient shoreline that's 53 miles long, which is our county bay shoreline length? How do you build a shoreline that's resilient at that length, at that scale, that includes 11 jurisdictions? And the 12th jurisdiction is not actually touching the shoreline. Earlier, I mentioned 12, but it is impacted by the bay. So if you think about the bay shoreline, how do you actually implement something like that? And so that's a great question, and we face that all the time in Burlingame because we're both planning a regional project that includes not just Burlingame shoreline, but also Millbrae tied into SFO and San Mateo. At the same time, there are major, multiple major private developments that are right now in the entitlement process. And so how do we take advantage of the fact that those developments that have collectively a couple of miles of shoreline just on the private developments, how do we take advantage of the fact that those are moving forward while we're planning this regional project? And so what we've taken the strategy is, it's impractical when Foster City has just finished building theirs. Menlo Park and East Palo Alto are in very active design phases in sequo of theirs. Burlingame and Millbrae is active in planning and early design of theirs. How do you take all of that and align it into something that provides as much as possible a uniform level of protection on a time scale that they all move forward and no one is disadvantaged by the fact that they all move forward? So it's a very challenging question, and we've just taken the approach that planning, design, and constructing 53 miles at one time involving 12 cities is not going to happen, is that it's better to take advantage of opportunities and plan very, that lengthy but discreet segments of the shoreline. The projects that we take on, we really, I really have two goals in those projects. We want them to be meaningful, and we want them to be achievable. The achievable piece is what you're getting to, and that's a complicated decision-making process to make sure it's achievable, while at the same time, thinking about the meaningful so that it's not just one property at a time, it's a broader scale, but that sweet spot is hard.
Thank you. Two other questions, just about the overlay zones. Could you just give me at a high level, why would a city look to adopt an overlay zone either for sea level rises, for shallow groundwater? Is there any sort of practical benefits, other than just sort of pulling together and organizing a response to those challenges?
Yeah, I guess that's a great question, and I'm not sure if I can fully address it. There's, yeah, this was based heavily on templates that were used, like I mentioned, those other resources throughout the country. And the approach that a lot of them took were defining the area that's applicable, and then having the provisions applied to that defined area. And so an overlay district approach was what was what we saw as the common approach. What was also interesting about that is it defined an overlay based on a map that was not included in the zoning code itself, so that map could be dynamic. And so that's the approach that we took with the planning policy guidance, is having provisions that speak to an overlay district, but that overlay district's defined on this map of future conditions. That's an interactive kind of dynamic map, because sea level rise science will change, and that map overlay should change with it. So that's the approach that we saw used in other jurisdictions throughout the country, and that's the recommendation we had in our guidance.
Okay. And one follow- And one follow-up, I don't know if you know the answer. I may have read about this in the SFEI, the San Francisco Estuary Institute's initial document. I think probably it was on shallow groundwater. But they mentioned, I thought they mentioned that overlay zones could lead, I don't know if it would lead to like a taxing district or a taxing entity, or if, or if the overlay zone at least creates opportunities to capture funding sources for improvements. I don't know if that's like a straight line or not, or if you even know. I'm just, I'll keep researching.
No, no, it's a great question. It comes up often. Yeah, maybe Len, you could speak to this. But we do have one area, I can find the page number for you later, but we have one, we have blue boxes throughout the document. We have one blue box that's focused on impact fees or ways to have specific developers contribute to regional resilience. So that shoreline protection requirement that I mentioned earlier, they could either build their frontage to meet the One Shoreline Bay Protection Standard, provide land or provide land rights to the local jurisdiction to build to it later. Another option, which we didn't put into the zoning text, was they could also pay an impact fee or pay some into some sort of pool from which a regional reach of shoreline protection would be funded. So we touch upon that in the guidance, but we don't have any specific recommendations.
I remember that blue box.
Well, you read it well.
And then community benefits. So those things could sort of just be tied to an overlay zone potentially?
Yeah.
Maybe.
So they would be tied, so our overlay zone is based on water. And largely, the properties that are within our water-based overlay zone benefit from the capital work to protect that area. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't assume that the polygon that is shapes our overlay zone is the same polygon that shapes some sort of benefit assessment district. Because that has to be done through a different process that shows direct specific benefits if you go out for some sort of a assessment in a district. And then one thing to clarify about that blue box is there's not, there's not three things that are being said, there's really two. One is either a private developer builds the shoreline protection, or they provide land rights and space, and they would be expected to help fund the eventual improvements. So anyway, that's slight clarification. But, but I would say, you know, your reading of it is good. Don't necessarily look at the water-driven overlay zone to be the same as what the benefit assessment area would be, because that's, that takes into account other factors besides just where water will go.
Right. Thank you very much.
Through the chair, if I could add something about the zoning overlay zones, typically those are using, and I'm just applying it from my planning lens, not so much the One Shoreline lens, but typically they allow for standards that can be specific to development and land use that occurs, and that provides opportunity to codify those policy guidance and policy documents and implement them in the real world. So that would be one of the intents of the zoning overlay.
Thank you very much. Through the chair, that's all my questions.
Thank you.
Chair Natter, Cliff Robbins is waiting to talk.
Yes, if we could bring Cliff on now. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one question. Besides commenting that this is, was a great presentation, you know, I've seen some of the One Shoreline materials, particularly with the general plan. I've not had a chance to look through all this, nor have I gone through the guidance. So I am curious as to whether the guidance, either your written materials or your future activities, will involve providing assistance or guidance on finding funding for basically the city or other public-funded projects. I understand a lot of it's zoning and it puts the onus on the developers, but is there any current or future plan for providing assistance and finding funding? This is expensive stuff.
Yeah, so this is expensive stuff. Thank you for acknowledging that. The, so the answer is yes. This is a, this is a, we don't view this as a traditional public works project. It's not only on the public sector to build these things because there's so many benefits to the private sector. But having said that, it is in part a public works project, and One Shoreline has, has already engaged with many cities in terms of securing funding for planning and design of these shoreline regional efforts. And in fact, in the Burlingame-Millbrae project, One Shoreline put $4 million into it from local money that we secured from the state of California. And we've also, McKenna has actually led the charge on a lot of this, have been raising outside money for shoreline resilience planning and design in other areas of the bay shoreline.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just bearing in mind that San Mateo's got the extra element of our wastewater treatment facility, which is going to require both extra protection as a facility, but it plays a major role in flood prevention as well as treating wastewater. Anyway, thank you. I'll leave myself again. And thanks, Jen.
Thank you, Cliff.
Sure, I've got some questions here, just about two or three. I want to go back to something that Commissioner Robbins just brought up is funding. And Len, you brought this up during your presentation. You talked about developing ongoing funding streams. Is that for the One Shoreline district? Or is it for, as what Commissioner Robbins brought up, projects? And if so, what are some of those funding strategies that are under discussion?
So they're for both, both One Shoreline operations and for projects. And we're looking at a, I'll just say, we're looking right now at a very broad range of ideas, some of which are taxing and some tax authorities, and some of which are non-tax authority. And so I don't, we have a, we have a subcommittee of our board that's exploring that right now, and I don't want to go into too much detail and kind of get out ahead of what they're considering, but we're looking at a lot of different options. Some of them are not enabled yet by state legislation, so we're thinking of state legislation as a, as a way to create new approaches to securing funding because the challenge that we face demands new approaches.
Right. I could see bonds. We're talking big infrastructure projects.
That's right.
And I'm sure that's probably on the table as well.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay, so work in progress, I'm hearing taxing, non-taxing mechanisms, impact fees, I guess to be determined.
Well, definitely, yes. It's definitely to be determined. Right now, we're going through an exercise of kind of whittling down to a short list of maybe half a dozen that we'll pursue quite a bit further in our analysis. You might remember that in 2021 and 2022, there was discussion of the county putting a parcel tax on the ballot. And that was to be a per square foot parcel tax that would have been county-wide, and there was a lot of activity around that, including polling and outreach by the county. At the, in 2022, at the time, the decision had to be made whether to put it on the ballot. About 15 months ago, 14 months ago, there was a lot of talk about inflation and gas prices and all of that, and, and the polling numbers on the parcel tax, it would be for wildfire resilience and water resilience. The polling was, was becoming less and less favorable, and so the county decided at that point not to do it. But that idea and other ideas, everything's on the table right now.
Right. Other questions I have is McKenna, yeah, you mentioned the policy that is currently in place is for new and substantial private development. I'm assuming that's along shorelines, and that's probably some high-density housing projects, any commercial office projects. I can't see much industrial taking place out there, but that could. When do you expect the public policy to be released? That is related to public policies, I mean, public infrastructure projects?
Yeah, so we're currently targeting end of 2024, so in the next year and a half or so. Yeah, we're going through the scoping of that right now, looking at what would be included in such a document. That's like Len referenced, meaningful and also achievable, because it's easy to get, to expand to be a really big document. But we're looking at stormwater, like I mentioned in the presentation, wastewater treatment, roads, parks, also real properties. The county, I've been talking with them a lot, they're developing their own sea level rise guidance for their, for their real property department. So as they're acquiring property and making decisions, how do you account for sea level rise in those decisions? So anyways, these are all the different categories that are not fully covered in depth in this document, but what areas of capital project planning can we cover? And yeah, end of 2024.
Okay. Great, thank you. And then one last question here. This might be a question from Matt, and this has to do with large capture devices, trash capture devices, something that the Sustainability Infrastructure Commission has discussed several times, and was actually brought up in the presentation by McKenna and Len within the context of storms and trash removal. I know that the state has mandated large trash capture devices to be in place by 2025?
They've mandated that there be a specific reduction in the amount of trash that gets out to the bay, and so the means of achieving that, I think, are up to the jurisdictions, but a lot of jurisdictions are installing large trash capture devices because they can treat large areas with single devices that have, you know, less maintenance than hundreds of small devices. So we've moved forward on, I think we have three or four of them that are in place at this point within the city.
Right. And how many more do we have? Because, you know, the trash from the storms was an issue too, a big issue.
Yeah, we have, I think the three or four large ones, I'm not sure if we have other large ones in the works, but we also are going to be installing, I think, a few hundred more of the small ones that go inside the catch basin drain inlets and roadway. So those are smaller devices, and those ones do require frequent maintenance in terms of our crews going out. So it's sort of a trade-off. They're a lot cheaper and easy to install than the large ones. The large ones, you really have to find a good place where you can have the right drainage area and the right infrastructure to install one, but they've got, you know, a centralized location that's easy to maintain once a year as opposed to the small ones, you can put them in any drain inlet for the most part. So, so we are, that's part of our overall strategy along with other trash reduction measures to meet the overall 100% reduction requirement that we have to achieve. I'm not sure exactly what the date is, but that's part of our plan.
Yeah. Could you envision the cities, we're looking at a stormwater infrastructure tax that's going to go out to vote presumably this fall? Could the funds from that cover this, the large trash, large trash capture devices?
Yeah, the Community Flood and Storm Protection Initiative is currently in the public notice period where entities or property owners can register protests to that, assuming that there's not a majority protest, the council would have the ability to direct us to issue balloting. It would be a property-related fee, so it'd be all property owners would have the opportunity to vote on that. And those funds would be primarily focused on maintaining and upgrading and maintaining our existing storm drain infrastructure. And I think there is a piece of that that would be focused on the regulatory requirements associated with the municipal regional permit. There's a lot more than just trash that we have to do in terms of keeping stormwater clean, so some of that money would go towards our compliance programs.
Right, towards regulatory compliance as it relates to trash and toxics that are washed out, whether it's to the bay or onto people's property.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, thank you for tonight's presentation. I have clarifying questions, and I'm sorry if I missed any of this during the presentation, but in the general plan, will there be a zoning code update to accommodate any of these guidelines that will be coming in?
Through the chair, we have policies in the general plan that speak to adopting an adaptation plan. And once the general plan is adopted, we do expect an overhaul of the zoning ordinance to implement the general plan policies. So at that point, we will, you know, see what, what elements of the planning policy guidance can be incorporated.
Great, thank you. And then one question about the policy, the One Shoreline policy guidance. So if I, if I understand correctly, does it actually include metrics and recommendations for distances from the shore that, that is recommended for every city to, and San Mateo to do the same, or will each city evaluate what fits best for them?
So for the, I think you're referring to the buffer zone requirement, and this is a requirement that recommends that, or a requirement that new shoreline developments are set back. That is uniform across the bay shoreline. It's recommended at 100 feet, but that's a minimum. As sea levels rise, you know, they could continue to migrate beyond that. The reason why we chose 100 feet was it was also in line with BCDC jurisdiction, and so developments within that 100-foot band are already considering sea level rise as required by the BCDC permit, so it was a natural thing to have that uniform.
Through the chair, thank you. I have one question. Your policy guidance document recommends exempting single-family homes, duplexes, and low-density multifamily residential housing as defined by the local jurisdiction from both the sea level rise overlay zone and the ground broader rise overlay zone. And I was curious, what is the motivation for exempting those types of developments from those overlay zones?
So there were concern from some jurisdictions about having an undue burden. For example, the shoreline protection infrastructure requirement, so any new development on the bay shoreline would have to build to the bay protection standard, that that would be a really onerous requirement if someone wanted to do a significant work on a single-family home that may be in the sea level rise overlay zone. What land use types are impacted vary city to city. Where this, where we developed a lot of this template language was focused on Burlingame initially, which is really heavily commercial in the sea level rise overlay, but there's other areas, including San Mateo and also East Palo Alto, very heavily residential. For any large residential developments, we thought it was fitting to have some of these requirements, but if someone is looking to do something on a single family, we didn't feel appropriate for the planning guidance, but of course, really support any jurisdiction that wants to go above and beyond the planning guidance.
Thank you. I'll wait to hold my further questions and comments till the discussion period.
Through the chair, thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation, and it's delightful to be in a cross-commission meeting with everyone, so I'm taking great pleasure from this. I have a few questions and just want to be super clear. So when we talk about shoreline projects and how to mitigate the impacts of climate change, are we talking solely about hard infrastructure, like a seawall or a levy? And could you expand upon that? And maybe McKenna, just stand, because I have several questions for you, and I'll just roll, roll through them so you don't have to keep on coming up and down. Thank you.
No, to answer your first question, not just focused on gray hard infrastructure, we are looking at obtaining FEMA accreditation. There are specific types of shoreline infrastructure that only FEMA will recognize to become accredited, but having hybrid elements that weave in natural infrastructure where possible is a really key priority of One Shoreline, and it's woven throughout the planning guidance. We have a lot of policy provisions that are saying incorporate natural elements to the greatest extent practicable throughout the document. So it's a, and then also the buffer zones play into that as well, right? So if a development is set back 100 feet from the bay shoreline, it's also trying to allow space for habitat to migrate, for marsh to migrate, and having access along the bay shoreline that's incorporated into that. We're looking to have all those elements be coordinated within that buffer zone.
Fabulous. And I did not read your report, so full disclosure that my questions might be a bit basic, but I was also very curious to understand, for an individual project, is it only the setbacks? Or for instance, you mentioned in your presentation, but I don't know the details, that there are certain things that will get triggered before a building permit. And so that's not the zoning code, that's building code stuff. And so I was curious if you- curious if you could articulate any details around that? Is there, are there ties to what your, what the resilience and adaptation work is to the building code beyond just the zoning code, or is it only zoning code that we're talking about?
I might have to ask the, the professional planner in the room, because, you know, we've done this question before, and our focus of the document has been on zoning, but I actually don't have a very clear understanding of how it interacts with the building code.
Yeah, happy to take that one on through, through the chair. I believe the building code standards are different from what One Shoreline is recommending. So currently, my understanding is that the building code requires in the flood, flood zone to be one foot above the base flood elevation. So the planning policy guidance does go above and beyond what the building code currently requires. And therefore, should the city be interested in implementing that, we would have to adopt our own local standards.
Okay, great. So what I'm hearing is that if the zoning code pieces are adopted, it would then cascade down into the building code, and the building code would have to be updated accordingly?
Yes, the, the, the planning entitlements will govern the standard to which they're built during the building permit process.
Fabulous. And one of our favorite things on the Sustainability Infrastructure Commission is building decarbonization. And I was just curious, from a more technical aspect, are there any challenges? San Mateo is very proud to have one of the most ambitious building decarb policies for new construction in the entire nation, yay. But curious, in your research and analysis, when you were developing the, the report, are there any potential impacts that we need to anticipate to, that would complicate the success of a new construction doing building decarb and also achieving all the pieces outlined in, in your report when they, when they build a project?
Yeah, I, I don't know if I can speak to that specifically, because I'm not familiar with a lot of those decarbonization methods and how these types of provisions might impact that. I don't know. Yeah. Yeah, we'll have to get back to you on that.
Through the chair, I'll also have to check with our sustainability coordinator to see how the decarbonization efforts, you know, would align with the One Shoreline efforts. So we can certainly follow up separately on that.
Thank you. I just love intersectionality. The, McKenna, I think those are all the questions for you. So thank you so much. My last question, I think, will be for staff. So we talked about the, the adaptation plan, and I was curious if you could provide a little bit more detail on the, the outline of that, who's, who's doing that, how is that going to roll out?
Well, we don't have a great, great deal of detail on that at this point. We do have some money that's budgeted for it. Whether or not it's going to be enough for a full plan or not remains to be seen. So I think our next steps would be that we'd want to work on developing a scope of work for what would be the focus of that adaptation plan. I think we'd want to work closely with One Shoreline on developing that scope of work to make sure that we're, we're not leaving things out that are important things to be considered. And then we'd need to get a consultant on board that would help us. So I think those would be our next steps. We have that money budgeted for, for this year that we could begin working on that project. So I think that it's something that Public Works would be taking the lead on, but it's obviously a cross-departmental plan, and, and we need to be working with multiple different groups within the city. So I think it may be led by Public Works, but we'd be working closely with the other departments as we develop that.
That'll be fabulous. And it'll extend beyond just water, correct? It could, it would address heat and potentially other areas as well, or that still is remaining to be seen?
I think it's, it's, the language that's in the adopted charter in the budget makes it seem like it's focused on water, but it also mentions other, you know, looking at the climate risks. I think the, the real challenge is the amount of money that we have is probably not sufficient to be looking at all the climate risks. I think we have $150,000 budgeted, and so I think if we're going to be doing an adaptation plan that was looking at all the different climate risks, it would become a much bigger effort. So this may have to be the start of a larger effort in terms of adaptation planning and that we focus on, you know, the sea level rise and storm piece. Obviously, we do have a lot of focus on storm resiliency, and we, you know, had a meeting last night to talk about all the storm protection measures. And there's, there's obviously connections between what we're trying to make sure that we're capable of doing for storm protection with sea level rise. We talked a lot about the importance of the Marina Lagoon and the Marina Lagoon pump station last night, and I'm definitely concerned that if all of a sudden we have that level of sea level rise, it's going to affect our ability to continue pumping out of that station. So these are all the things that we're going to have to think about. We also have San Mateo Creek that is the one watershed in our city that does not go through a pump station, and it's much easier to build shoreline protection if you're, if you're able to pump your water from one side to the other and, and build some sort of structure in between. But what are we going to do about San Mateo Creek? You know, I'm not sure that, you know, damming it up and putting a pump station is, is the best solution. It may be that that's ultimately what has to be done, but we have to figure out what does that mean in terms of water coming back up the creek. And so there's a lot of intersections between the stormwater pieces that, that Public Works is definitely focused on and worried about and concerned about in terms of what happened on New Year's Eve. So I think that that seems like the, the likely place that we'd want to focus our efforts with the money that we have. But I, you know, fully recognize that we need to be looking at all these other pieces. Obviously, if we start bringing in wildfire and things like that, it starts to bring in, you know, other agencies like San Mateo Consolidated Fire and things like that. So it becomes larger efforts that will require more resources, I'm sure.
And so what I'm hearing is that'd be great if city council, you know, considered all these things and at some point before we start the plan. Thank you so much. Those are my questions.
Through the chair, if I could just add that we are also looking at the local hazard mitigation plans. So there are other plans in place that talk about resiliency and climate change in other areas that are not directly connected with the shoreline.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions at this time?
Thank you so much for your presentation. That was something I've been waiting for for a while, and I really appreciate you coming here and, and presenting to us. I do have a couple of questions. I think these are probably all for One Shoreline. First of all, the, you mentioned early flood warning system. Is that already in place, and can you elaborate on that?
So I'll probably tag team this with city staff. One Shoreline system is in place, and we currently, on multiple creeks throughout the county, have, have gauges that, that evaluate the water level within particular creek systems. And we compare water level to creek capacity downstream. And if it looks like there's going to be flooding, we have conversations with city staff, emergency response staff prior to that. And in a couple creeks in our, in our county principally, or especially San Mate, San Bruno Creek and Belmont Creek, we send out alerts through SMC Alert, which is a system that's countywide. People get notifications on their cellphones largely. So that's our system built out. We do have opportunities to augment that system here in the city of San Mateo, and, and we're interested in doing that. I'll let Matt add to that, I think he knows. The only creek that we currently have any gauging information on in San Mateo is on San Mateo Creek, and that's in conjunction with the SFPUC and how they manage the Crystal Springs Reservoir. And so the gauge that they have is just downstream of the dam. So we are definitely interested in getting more gauging information on our creeks for our efforts in terms of flood control and protection. We have had conversations with SFPUC about potentially adding additional gauging on San Mateo Creek. That would be very helpful for us and helpful for them. They, especially during the storms, they got very close to overtopping the spillway, and they were trying to release as much water as they could to bring the levels down. But they have to pay attention to the tides in terms of when they can release and how much they can release, and they also have certain properties along the creek that are potentially, could be flooded if they released too much water. And so for their purposes, they would also like to have more information real time on what's going on in the creek. And so I think that we, we find that mutually beneficial, and hopefully we can, you know, move forward on getting something done on that. But other than that, you know, there's no other creeks that are currently being gauged or have plans for, for gauging right now. I'll add one, one more point that I forgot. We do have a, a, a gauge on San Mateo Creek as well, in addition to the SFPUC gauge, but it doesn't provide real-time useful early warning. It really just provides data that we use, or could use to kind of ground truth what we're seeing at the SFPUC gauge and any other real-time gauges that we were to install. So there's, there's definitely room for robust augmentation among, in our system along San Mateo Creek, and, and we would recommend that probably in the area of Deans Park.
Right. I think that that would be very useful, and hopefully before this winter, which might be another rainy one. Now, I know that this, this policy guidance is only for the new development, which we have very little empty space in the city of San Mateo. You know, we're very highly, highly developed already. I'm just wondering, are we unique in the other cities in the county? Or you mentioned that there were some Burlingame and some other areas that had more places where this was really useful for them for new development. Is, what are other cities on the shoreline in our county using this guidance document for? If they, are they like us, or do they, other cities have more space for new development?
Well, every city's different, of course. And I would encourage everyone to think about the area that's appropriate for looking at this planning policy guidance is not just the shoreline. We call it the shoreline area, and as our map of future conditions showed and the city map showed, this extends beyond Highway 101, from the bay beyond Highway 101. And in many cases, it extends to the Caltrain tracks. And so it's really a broad area of all of the 12 cities that are impacted by the bay, including San Mateo. And it's not just whether San, the city of San Mateo has private development along the shoreline, like perhaps Burlingame or East Palo Alto, or Menlo Park or Redwood City do right now. So again, every, every city is different, and, and the cities, it's, we, we showed one of the slides that McKenna showed indicated that Burlingame, San Carlos, San Mateo, and San Francisco have already incorporated aspects of this, either in a draft general plan or an approved general plan or zoning ordinance. And, and other cities are considering this, depending on kind of where they're at with these various processes. Other cities maybe have more private development along the shoreline than the city of San Mateo. I think that's probably true. But they're kind of each in their own, in their own way incorporating this, depending on what are the pressures that they're feeling for development.
Through the chair, if I could add to that. So I think the general plan did identify study areas where a lot of the growth would be concentrated. And of course, as part of the adaptation plan, we would be doing probably a local risk assessment, like what are those areas that may have potential for impacts in the future, and doing a vulnerability assessment that's more focused on the city itself.
And I'll add to that, that we did a survey of the RENA allocations that, or the RENA proposals by the 12 cities that are impacted by the bay in San Mateo County. And we found that 43% of proposed housing is in either the current or future flood plain. And that's a hard issue to deal with, right? Because there's a lot of, cities are feeling it from the state, they're feeling it from their constituents that want more housing, including affordable housing. And so at One Shoreline, our position is not, you can't do that because that's impractical. And it gets back to a previous question about kind of where One Shoreline was at with single-family homes. Our position is not, you can't do it, but when you do it, do it in a way that is resilient to future conditions so that this new housing can actually not have to be taken out or significantly retrofitted in 15 years because you weren't thinking about these issues.
Okay. I have a couple more questions. Thank you. One, and excuse me if I missed this in, in my reading of the document, but when you talk about shallow groundwater and you mentioned that there are ideas for developers to think about as far as that's concerned, do you, do you mention in the guidance document underground parking or, you know, subterranean levels? And my apologies if it's there and I missed it.
No, no. Yeah, I think I have to actually just refresh my memory as well. But I think it's a conditionally approved land use under the shallow groundwater rise overlay, meaning that it would only be approved, it's recommended that it's only approved to be in that overlay if they have an adaptation pathway that defines how that they will, how that parking structure will become resilient to shallow groundwater rise impacts over time. And if they're not able to provide that, they will not be permitted to be in that, that overlay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Also, I think this will probably be from McKenna. When you talk about stormwater protection, I know in the document, you know, you have, you talk a little bit about low-impact development, or maybe you don't use those terms, but you, you're talking about that. And here in the city of San Mateo, a lot of our sidewalks are very narrow. We already have, you know, a lot of issues with not having space for, you know, to put in bike lanes and have parking. And, you know, is there any way that you can envision putting any kind of stormwater protection, low-impact development into sidewalk areas when there's just very little space?
Yeah, I don't, it is extremely constrained, and so it's really difficult. And that's where I think there is a lot of room to grow on those provisions. I don't think we outlined specifically, yeah, LID, but more that new private proposals need to ensure that they don't have additional runoff off that property than, not before their development was proposed, but before bringing it back to the undeveloped condition. So we go a little bit beyond the current MRP requirements in these provisions, requiring that, say that there's no impervious surface on that parcel. They need to retain that much stormwater on their parcel to ensure that that runoff is before, is back to the undeveloped condition. So that, those are the, that's an example of a provision that we include in the planning guidance. We don't get as specific as like curb extensions and things like that.
Okay. And then one, one last question, and again, apologies if I missed this, but I don't think it's in the guidance document. But have you thought about any appropriate areas for like daylighting creeks where, again, because we have so little undeveloped space, but there are some, you know, creeks along like a parking area or something like that, is there any guidance that you can give maybe in a, as this document evolves about daylighting, you know, opening up a creek and giving it more room where there is room because it's so rare?
Yeah. Yeah, daylighting specifically, we don't touch upon. I think that is an area that we can look at in future iterations. But the buffer zone requirement is kind of speaking to that a little bit of having that 35 feet off of the creek bank. It's also in the shallow groundwater rise overlay, especially where the research for shallow groundwater rise is the areas that are currently soggy. That sogginess will extend, of course, as sea levels rise. And so you need to have some buffer around existing marshy areas or existing creeks to allow for that growth and that migration. So that's another purpose of that buffer zone, really 35 feet. I mean, it's really difficult to implement because these are really urban corridors currently, but in terms of allowing for that migration, 35 feet is really not enough. And so once again, emphasizing that that buffer zone is a minimum, and especially considering shallow groundwater rise, you need to really set back farther to allow those, those creeks to migrate. So that's where it speaks to it a little bit. But yeah, in terms of daylighting, it doesn't speak to that at this point.
Okay. One, one last question. Just because you're in tune with everything all over the county, you know, you talk a little bit about managed retreat, and I'm just wondering, are there any cases where there have been buyouts in the county?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Are you? Yeah, there, I mean, on the coast side of the county, it's been pretty dramatic. I mean, maybe you guys are familiar with Pacifica. There's been developments that are right on the bluffs that have actually fallen into the Pacific Ocean due to really dramatic erosion. So there's some use cases within the county where it would make sense. Not that I know of on the bay shoreline, or, or they're not buyouts on the coast side that I'm aware of either, but yeah, not, not.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do have a couple of just clarifications, if you don't mind. As it pertains to One Shoreline's bay protection standard, Len, I think that you mentioned that with the BFE plus six, does that give you an elevation of 10 feet above, above the existing level to get to protection throughout the, the area? Are we looking at a 10-foot seawall?
No. What I was equating earlier in the question from Mr. Wiggins was that the, that there are two ways to look at that. One is based on the FEMA base flood elevation. The other is based on the high tide. And so six feet above FEMA is approximately, almost exactly equal to 10 feet above today's daily high tide. In terms of how that relates to the current elevation on the shoreline, that's another question. So people shouldn't imagine either a six-foot wall or a 10-foot wall. They should So people shouldn't imagine either a 6-foot wall or a 10-foot wall, they should take stock of where today's current shoreline is in relation to the high tide, to that they could add 10 feet. But in some cases, today's shoreline is maybe 8 feet above the high tide level, and so it would require a 2-foot elevation, something like that.
Okay, beautiful. So in the, some of the work that I have seen that you did in Burlingame specifically, one of the maps shows different dimensions, maybe three or four different dimensions along the coastline. Is that saying that developments within the flood zone or that area need to have a ground floor of 18 feet from, not from the waterline, but from the existing ground level?
So again, I'll have to parse this out a little bit. What you were referring to is the fact that the FEMA base flood elevation at the shoreline is different in different parts of our county, and that's due largely to waves. And so the area that's more protected by the runway that sticks out southerly at San Francisco International Airport is a certain FEMA elevation. As we get farther away from that runway, in the city of Burlingame, farther south away from the runway, the FEMA base flood elevation increases because the area is not protected by the runway. So what that means is, because our bay protection standard at this moment is tied to the FEMA base flood elevation, that the bay protection standard also increases with that FEMA base flood elevation. So yes, there are different parts of the shoreline have different elevations that they're trying to follow. Could you repeat the second part of that question?
Does that mean that your, the first floor of a building that is habitable needs to be that elevation above?
Yeah, so if I could cut you off and just say, everything I just said is really about shoreline elevation. Base flood elevation is now looking at, the first floor elevation of a building is now looking at the base flood elevation on land, and the city of San Mateo already has a requirement about first floor elevations, that they can't be below the base flood elevation, they probably have to be 1 foot above, yeah, so 1 foot above. And what we're recommending is if you're in the area impacted by sea level rise and groundwater rise, instead of 1 foot above that base flood elevation like city already requires, to add 2 more feet and build it 3 feet above the base flood elevation. And one of the reasons to do that is FEMA is regularly raising their base flood elevation. In the decade between 2010 and 2020, FEMA did it twice throughout the Bay Area. They, in 2012, they increased their base flood elevation by a foot, and then they did it again in 2019. And it's likely, well, first of all, it's almost certain it's not going to go down, and it's likely it will go up again, we just don't know when. And so the more that we can do now on these buildings, the better off we'll be.
Well, yes, it seems very intelligent to use this strategy and not putting dates to it, as we've all tried to figure this issue out and project it out with dates, and you simplifying it, or this commission trying to simplify it really seems to be very beneficial. One last question, and it has to do with the protection standards also. It's on page 5 of the report, and it has to do with, I'm sure you're aware of what I'm, the last sentence that I'll read, and you'll be able to back it up. Therefore, the bay protection standard ranges from 16 feet to 22 feet NAVD 88. So what is that referring to?
Yeah, so, and I think that is defined at some point in the document, probably. NAVD 88 is, well, the 88 part refers to?
I'm sorry, I know what that portion is, but why have we increased it? Theirs, FEMA's would be 10 to 16, we go 16 to 22.
Because we're adding 6 feet to FEMA's.
Right, okay. Are you getting positive, and I know you alluded that it might not be all positive, but are people buying into this BFE plus 6 feet and understanding the necessity of it, and not just relying on FEMA?
By people, you mean the jurisdictions?
Yes.
Because that's our audience essentially for this. I mean, first of all, I'll backtrack on the question of positive and less positive. In the development of this document, we received 579 comments, and that's a lot. If you're trying to put together a document, you do a draft, you get 579 comments, and then you try to integrate as much as possible those comments. And so of course, some of those comments are, hooray, thank you for doing this, very specifically or in general, and some of those comments are, you're nuts, you know, what are you trying to do here? So that's a given, that that kind of range exists, and among jurisdictions, there's also a range about their, you know, their interest and willingness to incorporate elements of the planning guidance policy. I think that we've come a long way through the development of this document, and since the document came out as a public draft, and then it was finalized by our board two months ago, I think we've come a long way in having people understand what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it. And that's all positive, and some jurisdictions have different nuances on the 6 feet for various reasons, and that's okay. Again, this is guidance, it's not, it's not a strict policy. At the end of the day, our job is both planning and projects, and what we're trying to do is reduce the burden on projects to align the 12 jurisdictions and 53 miles as much as possible.
Great. Well, one last comment statement. I know that this now is concentrated on new private properties or developments, yet there are numerous references to public infrastructure and their needs. So thank you for getting it into this draft, and I look forward to the 2024, when you really do get into the teeth of the infrastructure projects. Thank you.
Well, we look forward to it too, and I think that the city of San Mateo staff will be, and you all will be a great partner in helping to develop that.
Can we go to public comment now, Mary, please?
Chair of matter, we have one in-person public commenter and none via Zoom.
Thank you.
Should I do 3 minutes for that?
Absolutely.
Robert Harker, you can step to the podium.
Sea level rise is a done deal, the glaciers are moving. Levees probably won't work long-term. It's a pleasure to be able to address the committee on this, the committees on this. I'm Robert Harker, I'm a Bay Area Peninsula native, I have had a lifelong interest in bay geology, bay ecology, and the problem that we're facing is that sea level rise is going to happen, and levees won't work. First of all, the glaciers are moving. Glaciers are very delicately balanced systems, they're balanced between elevation and temperature. As a glacier gets a little bit warmer, it starts to move, it moves downhill, it gets a little warmer, and so it moves a little faster. We're at the beginning of this, we are losing the ice sheets. The other problem with levees is that they aren't just at the waterfront, you have to do it all along the creeks. A tool that geologists use is something called a long stream profile, where you look at the length of a stream or a river, and you note its elevation. And here, if you were to look at a long stream profile, you would see that there would be two distinct slopes. There would be the hills, which is very steep, but once it hits what's called the Bahad, is the alluvial plain, it becomes very relatively flat. And if you raise the front of that, of the creek by 10 feet, you have to raise the whole long stream profile by similar amounts. And it's not just for, you know, the first mile, you're going to have to do it until you get enough angle change to actually be able to absorb that change. So we're not looking at levees just along the coast, we're looking at levees all the way up to El Camino, probably beyond El Camino. And if we're, I mean, just imagine San Mateo Creek with 10-foot levees on either side, taller than it is now, it's going to be kind of odd. The other problem is that levees, if they, if they fail, the levees that are designed, and I'm not an expert on this, actually, a little bit of background for me, nevermind, if they fail, they are typically concrete on alluvial, on fill. And so if you get an overtopping of the levee, it erodes the dirt behind it, and the concrete is not designed to withstand the pressure of the water, so you tend to get a levee failure. And if there's a levee failure, the problem is that levees then turn into dams. And as we learned from Hurricane Katrina in New Orleans, it took New Orleans like weeks and weeks to drain the flooded areas. So if we get flooding from, say, 101, 92, and Peninsula, that's a huge flood basin, it's going to take weeks to empty that. The other thing, and so levees don't really work, but it turns out that we actually, and this is sort of out-of-the-box thinking, we have a huge pump just offshore called the Tides. So one solution for this, and I, it's out-of-the-box thinking, is if we built levees halfway across them, out on the mud flats, put in some massive tidal gates, we could then create a flood basin and use the gates to then mitigate the problem. Essentially, the way it would work is that as, in normal operation, the gate would be open, just because we don't have any flood risk, but when there was a flood risk, as the tide came in, and the river started, the creek started to run backwards, which they do when the flood comes in, you would raise the gates, and you create this flood basin. We'd get the tide, the maximum tide, the tide would go out, when the tide gets lower than the water behind it, you open the gates and you drain it. And another comment, just to, if you're not really aware of the scope of the problem, the next time we have an atmospheric river, I strongly recommend that, you know, after it's been raining for a couple days, drive around the city on various streets that cross the creeks, get out of your car, look at the water, because what you'll see is you'll see.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'll have to interrupt, it's been 4 minutes. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any more public commenters, Mary?
There are no other public commenters.
Thank you, we'll close the public comment period, and bring it back to the commissioners for more questions and/or follow-up comments, please.
Through the chair, I guess I can go first. I wanted to expand on my question, which is the policy guidance essentially recommending that low-density housing be exempt from the, most of the provisions of the groundwater overlay zone and sea level rise overlay zone. So I'm just looking at our general planned draft land use map, and if I had to eyeball this and guess, I would say that 80% of the land that's in the flood zone is zoned for low-density housing. And I've been really surprised, and I've been following some of the discussion around the, I forget the official name, the community stormwater ballot measure, and I've been really surprised to follow some of the discussion and hear that, hear some people discuss that flood insurance has gotten prohibitively expensive in these areas, and to the point where people are saying, and I find this so surprising, that, you know, my mortgage is paid off, I'm no longer required to have flood insurance, it's too expensive, so I don't have it anymore, and people saying, as soon as my mortgage is paid off, I'm getting rid of my flood insurance because it's too expensive. And so I'm really concerned that we are setting up these areas in this flood zone for disaster if we're not going to require low-density housing to adopt some of these mitigations, while simultaneously flood insurance is getting prohibitively expensive, and people are choosing to then opt out of it. You know, I'm imagining that 100-year flood event, and you have a whole bunch of area, most of the area in our flood zone where people didn't have insurance and their properties were not mitigated against that rise, like what would happen in that scenario to those communities? And so that's just something that concerns me, and I feel like we need, we need to have a plan for what happens in those scenarios.
Thank you. Mary, do we want to see if Cliff is speaking to us?
Nope.
Okay.
He's not at this point.
Okay. Cliff, would you like to make your comments or questions prior to the rest of us going forward?
No, I'm good, thank you, John.
Sure.
So to build on Commissioner Patel's track, there is a recommendation for real estate disclosure in the guidance, does that exempt the properties that she's speaking of as And maybe if you can explain the real estate disclosure more broadly, too?
Yeah, so the real estate disclosure provision requires that in a real estate transaction that they disclose, that there's disclosure of the sea level rise hazards, that's not currently required by the state of California, it's usually focused on the FEMA floodplain maps, which don't fully represent future climate hazards, including sea level rise. That's a great question about whether or not the low-density housing would be exempt from that, because the way that the policy guidance is structured is that there's the applicability provisions at the beginning for the overlay district, and those, and that section exempt low-density housing, and then all the provisions follow that. So it would follow, I guess, that that provision would exempt low-density housing, but those nuances, like we would work with city staff to ensure, you know, we have the right implementation in a city zoning code.
Any other questions? I did have, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, did your comments or just?
Questions, then we'll go to comments. I did have one more question. I think it's been noted a couple of times in the report that the effects of high water table are going to be felt considerably sooner than flooding from sea level rise. And it also seems to me that we don't have solutions in place for the groundwater water table, shallow water table. So how do we push that item to the front of the agenda? Because as Ms. Patel has spoken, I am greatly concerned with all of the existing built homes and businesses that are in these areas, and how are they going to be affected, you know, over the next 10 to 15 years? When do we think, I know that, I know that some of the studies have been completed projecting high-water tables up to a half a mile from the bay, but do we know, are there any projections of what are going to happen to those structures because of high-water tables?
Yeah, that's a great question, and it's an emerging area of research, so those level, that level of detail is not yet, I think, included for San Mateo County specifically. I referenced the SFEI study in 2022 that was released, that's essentially just showing the extent of potential shallow groundwater rise according to different scenarios, so that's the most detail we have at this point, but we've been, I've been in touch with the authors of that study, and we're hoping to apply those, that data into work that we're doing at One Shoreline. So for example, for this Millbrae-Burlingame shoreline project, we're considering a levee project, right? But that is focused on overland flooding from the bay, not necessarily considering the implications of shallow groundwater rise underneath that levee. So we're looking at working with researchers at Stanford, and then also the data from SFEI, to consider how can we incorporate maybe cut-off, seepage cut-off walls, or any types of techniques to account for shallow groundwater rise over the life of that levee structure as well. So those are some of the ways that we're thinking about it, but it's definitely emerging area.
When we're When we're asked to review a proposed development by a city, a city will send a developer our way and send us their application materials. One of the questions that we ask them are, how are your underground utilities and other kind of features of your project resilient against groundwater rise? Because it's not just kind of the single-family homes, but there's a lot underneath the ground that we're not seeing that these developers, that developers propose as they have to, not just underground parking, as was referenced earlier, but utilities, and those utilities are subject to the impacts of groundwater rise as well. And I wanted to respond to something that Commissioner Patel said regarding the planning guidance, kind of not making recommendations regarding single-family homes. It is certain, and McKenna said this, but I just want to reiterate it, it is certainly in our interest that private residences are resilient, and the planning guidance is relatively silent on that, just because for some jurisdictions, that was really hard to imagine, having these requirements on single-family homes. But the more that we can all do at One Shoreline or at the city level to ensure that our homes are resilient for future conditions, the better off that all of us will be, including those homeowners, of course.
Thank you. And if I could add on to that a little bit, part of your document does address the communities who are at risk are not as wealthy as the general population, and I have to acknowledge you for recognizing that. And it yet again looks like some of our environmental degradation and hazards are going to be concentrated in areas of our county that are least able to accommodate them and could end up being forced to retreat. So I appreciate your commenting on that.
May I make a comment in response to what you just said? And that, to me, is one of the strongest reasons for a regional multi-jurisdictional project, is that it brings everybody along together and doesn't disadvantage communities that, as you indicated, have been disproportionately affected by climate and environmental justice issues. So by doing East Palo Alto and Menlo Park together, or Millbrae and Burlingame together, or San Bruno and South San Francisco together, you bring in the better-resourced and under-resourced communities along. And by having a bay protection standard, you try to ensure that no one's falling behind.
Thank you. Please.
Through the chair. Thank you so much. I do realize I have one question, which is a bit of a meta-question, I think, for you, Len. As you can see from the questions of the commissions, we are hungry to understand and work on this issue in, you know, not just in articulation of the report with the zoning guides, but then further along implementation as well, right? We talked about the building code, et cetera. My question to you is that you've alluded to your funding needs as an organization, and that the cities used to provide funding to you. I wanted to dig in a little bit more in terms of, what are your exact funding sources now? Do you have enough funding that you need in order to provide this technical support to the 12 cities that you do? What does it look like to scale? Because this is only going to become a bigger and bigger issue. And how can, you know, various entities support your efforts? You are currently, in my understanding, according to your website, a staff of four, of which three are the technical assistance providers, and one looks like operations. So that doesn't, to me, this is getting into comment, but doesn't seem to be terribly sustainable in terms of being able to provide the level of support that these commissions are asking, potentially in the long term, without additional funding. So could you articulate some of your maybe longer-term strategic plans and funding needs?
Well, you've certainly identified that we're understaffed, and we've been looking to bring on another project manager for a while, and we're still kind of in that exercise to augment the staff. But there's no question that even with, you know, an additional position, that that will be in a position to kind of do all the things that need to be done. And as we think about at One Shoreline, what are our long-term funding strategies, we're trying to incorporate ideas around what being, like, fully staffed would look like in terms of numbers, and both on the staff resources and on the budget resources side. So that's of keen interest by our board and myself to create that sustainability. And I can't really dive into the details on that too much, just to say that we're understaffed right now, and we recognize that, and we're trying to do the best we can at this point.
And does the city, the City of San Mateo, does it provide anything for your budgets, like it used to, or do not, do cities not currently do that?
The city's provided the first three years of startup funding.
The initial, okay.
Yeah, that's right. And it was meant to be like an on-ramp for the organization budgetarily. And so a combination of state resources and county resources, and the fact that in those first three years, we didn't spend what was anticipated by the original three-year plan, has enabled us to have about an additional five years of funding at this point, beyond the three, so eight total. And that's assuming we get not one more new dollar. So I feel like, at this moment, you know, we're still on a, we're still on a path to be able to provide these services, but again, long-term sustainable funding is something we're focused on.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, for questions? Any closing comments from the commissioners? Please.
Thank you. Through the chair. What a delight and what a privilege that the Bay Area has in having this kind of district and technical services. I used to work in cities across the nation. I worked in 36 cities across the nation in my prior career, and not everyone has what we have here. So this is a huge privilege and a huge benefit to our community to get proactive in our planning. And so this work could not be more important, more timely, and more appreciated. So thank you for that. I agree with Commissioner Patel about the concerns around single-family homes, wholeheartedly. In an effort to potentially be less political or divisive, not you, but the cities that maybe have provided that feedback to you, we, you know, we may be inadvertently actually disadvantaging the most disadvantaged in our respective cities. And I don't know what the political calculus is. That's not my job. But I will say that in terms of impact, and in terms of benefits, and in terms of long-term sustainability of a city, we can't have the most disadvantaged people in the most disadvantaged geographies in our cities being the ones who are left behind, even if the left behind is about regulations, which actually will create net benefits. So the politics are not my job, but that is actually what the data and long-term experience in climate work has indicated. When we exempt things, we have systemically, for instance, I'm a buildings expert on climate, and when we've systemically exempted single-family homes, when we've systemically exempted low-income multifamily housing, this has actually led to worse conditions and worse results for folks living in those types of dwellings. So we just have to be really mindful of that and the complexity that we have to live in, in this new reality. And that got to my last question to Len. I know it was a pointed question. Thank you, Len, for answering it and navigating it. But the reality of the situation is, is that we are not budgeting for our future in a way that actually can future-proof our city. And so to the articulation of the adaptation plans, 150K, that's a great start, not enough, all the way to the systems and, you know, that district, the district is encountering when it comes to those types of things. So what do the cities, what do the counties, how can we take advantage of the federal bipartisan infrastructure package and the resilience and adaptation money allocated there? How can we take advantage of the fact that this is in fact, like, addressing climate impacts should actually be an apolitical issue, because this is just reality? And so how do we take advantage of all these funding streams? And how do we actually have the staff and technical assistants to pull those funds down from the federal government and actually use them wisely? We have all of the pieces in place now, but it's the fact that we need to actually scale this in a timeline that is incredibly short. And that's the part that I think will require actual bravery and city leadership and taking on those political risks that I don't have to take on, but others do. But I just wanted to name. But again, thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Great work. Having done this type of work, it's really hard to identify and create a single template resource for a city of 12, using resources from across the nation, and I'm really excited to dig into it. So thank you.
Thank you, staff, for putting this meeting together. Thank you to all of the commissioners here for being interested, informed, and wanting to have more information from One Shoreline, to One Shoreline, and the electeds who were able to get this process going. I thank you very, very much. If there's any issue that should can bring all of us together, it is our environmental concerns. There should be no political fight about it, but unfortunately, everything turns into some type of political debate. I am so impressed with what One Shoreline has done. I thank you very, very much. A quick turnaround, limited budget, not much of a, not much of a staff, and the product so far is very encouraging. I honestly feel that, you know, we are lucky here in San Mateo that we've had county supervisors and state representatives who recognize that we are the most vulnerable county in the state to sea level rise, and it's extremely complicated issue which touches all of our lives. I could only hope that the public will eventually financially support what needs to happen. The numbers are so daunting, private and public property, that is exposed to sea level rise and high groundwater level, you know, it's in the billions of dollars. And why we aren't showing the urgency that needs to occur to address this communal problem is somewhat mind-boggling to me. Having a staff of four trying to lead this charge is very small. So thank you for everything that you do, and thank you for helping the City of San Mateo move forward at the best, in the best way that they can in their general plan update. I hope you have the time to continue to be a source for us, and I would hope you would look at our work with a critical eye and an honest assessment of where we're going. We've got a tremendous amount of exposure, and I'm hoping that a joint agreement between public and private entities can bring us some relief. So thank you. Any other comments from any of the other commissioners? Then I will close this portion of the meeting, and we can go to joint announcements, please.
Yes, thank you. To the chair, I only have the one announcement for our general plan update. We have a general plan subcommittee meeting next week, as well as a District Five Town Hall to share information on the draft general plan. So I encourage community members who may be listening, as well as any commissioners who are interested, to join. Separately, for September Planning Commission, we will be starting at 6:00 PM, both of our meetings, just because those will be focused on the general plan. Our September 12 meeting will be focused on the general plan draft EIR, and the September 26 meeting will be focused on the draft general plan. That's all the comments I had. Oh, I do want to note that for the September 12 meeting, Chair Ed Metter will not be present, so Vice Chair Patel will be leading the meeting, and Commissioner Williams will be joining remotely. I believe there's quorum for the next meeting, and everybody will be here in person on September 26, so we hope that stays. I don't know if there are any reports and announcements for SNI. Okay, that concludes staff's reports. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I'll close the meeting, unless anyone else has anything for reports. Thank you. Meeting adjourned. I'm so happy we were able to do this.